Water.
Oh, here we go.
Where's the lady?
Lady has spoken.
The lady has spoken. Alright. Yes, let's get started. So Jill, we've got two members of the public in the room, so just do introductions so you know who we all are. Um, so I'm Shayle Robinson.
I'm Coach here for the planning commission.
And Megan Pope, I'm a planning commissioner.
Yay, and no longer the chair. Jill, do you want to go next in the circle?
Sure, I'm Jill, also a coach here.
Uh, I'm Emily Hayman, I'm senior planner. I'm not on the planning commission, I am a town staff person.
I'm Ellen Duckett, please turn.
Uh, Matt Bonjay, planning director, also not on the planning. Chaping cater, planning commission member.
Do you have one thing to introduce us out here?
Uh, I've been here last week, so my name is Virginia, I live in the one four four. Hey, I'm thinking.
Uh, my name is Simon Kessler, and I live on St. George Road, South thirty-nine percent inch, but what's going on?
I feel free to lower the blinds too.
Yeah, we're relocating. Yeah, you're welcome. Roller chairs. Um, okay.
So we have five members and two vacancies. I don't know if, um, Kate was able to stay on in August and seen TVV.
Have we received any applicants?
I believe there have been some applicants to the select board, um, to consider for appointment.
Yeah. Yeah, they'll be taking that up, um, soon, maybe either August fifteenth or September fifth, I can't remember which.
I saw something about August fifteenth.
Yeah, I think that's right. I've got a lot of dates going around in my head.
Okay, okay. Be great. Um, do you just, do either of you have any public comment you would like to make before we get very good with our agenda?
No, I'm, I'm just here because I'm thinking about applying for the planning commission and figuring out.
Alright.
Get a breath of weather.
Great, okay. Wondering, will anybody else have a comment? Or can you just speak into? I already said mine, which was. Okay, I read the minutes, um, because I wasn't here at the, um, public hearing. Thank you so much. Those of you who were, um, the minutes were wonderful too, in terms of catching me up. Um, so I, of course, did so many edits from here, but.
I, um, have a question whether we should make it. I misspoke, um, towards the end where I said there was something happening in the Netherlands. I think I said about housing and priority, and the article I was referring to was about. Um, now I can't remember.
Vienna?
Vienna, or Ven- or Venice, I think it's Vienna.
Yeah.
I think it's Vienna. Um, I have a problem with names. So it was about Vienna, and I didn't know if we should, in here in brackets, say he meant Vienna. Or just because it, I don't know if it's going to steer anybody wrong saying, well, where's this article about?
You know, there's lots going on in the Netherlands too, I.
There is. I don't quite pay a lot of the Netherlands, but I definitely got my wires crossed.
I can change it and I'll link, um.
Yeah, I sent you.
I'll link the article too.
That would be cool. That would be cool. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, I thought they looked good. Very thorough.
There was one verb agreement, and I, do you want to fix it or not? I'd know we shouldn't even bother.
A grammatical typer?
Yeah.
Shocking.
It's very impressive how few there are giving so much emphasis.
Yeah.
And you were there.
I just only remember chicken.
Okay, alright, well, should we?
I'll move over to approve the minutes.
As amended with the important location information with chickens. Correction. All others in favor?
Ellie, Ellie said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. Passes, okay. Okay, on the village bylaw.
That is me, um. So, let me open.
You all are welcome to come up.
If you want to see.
Screen brightness isn't helping with the, the blinds, um. So I'm in the process of taking, um, a PDF document. Um, oh, that's great. Um, taking the PDF document that, you know, through last fall and earlier this year, we were working on commenting, trying to bring in the planning commission's comments and recommendations, the public's comments and concerns. Um, working just through the PDF wasn't going well, so uh, recently Matt and I have been bringing it into a Word document, um, to be able to, you know, visualize some of those changes. Um. And do some clarifying cleanups based on all of the input that's been happening. Um, we're feeling pretty good about permit requirements. In fact, some of those permit thresholds are included in that transmittal, um, that went to the, the select board, where I'm clarifying the permit thresholds, um, in this district. Um. A couple of things I wanted to call to your attention and then get a little bit of feedback on. Um, in the discussion of historic design standards and contributing structures. Um. Comment that architectural embellishments or modifications that were added after the original construction, typically before nineteen forty, may be considered contributing features. So trying to work that not only into the contributing structure standards, um, but then later on in the design and historic standards that a lot of Williston's properties were originally smaller buildings, simpler buildings, and then later on additions or embellishments were added, and those kind of tell the story of evolution in the village and try to be respectful of that. Some historic preservation is very much going back to the original date, um, and here wanting to, you know, recognize some of the fluidity um, of the historic heirs of the village.
And I, I participated in, in suggesting this partly because so much referred to being consistent with the original. And my house was built in the eighteen teens and then had a turret added in the eighteen nineties. And other Queen Anne changes made, and you could try to be consistent with one or the other depending on which side of the house or whatever, and so this just says they're also something you can be trying to match.
Um, one of the challenges, um, as I continue to work this, um, on revising all of this stuff. Um, is there's going to be that level of discretion that's just going to have to be inherent, and I know throughout this process, we're going back and forth between being so numerical and so exact that it creates a very easy and defined process. Um. For predictability, but then that makes it very rigid in terms of trying to balance these very, each property is unique, each side of the home may be unique. And there, there needs to be some discretion in how standards are applied. Um. One topic that we haven't talked much about as a commission is the standards for demolition. Um, so as a, a brief reminder that there's the National Register Historic District where everything is subject to review, and then throughout the village outside of that district, there's what we call contributing structures. So, um, basing all of our bylaw standards based on a contributing or non-contributing structure, basically is it historic or is it like a nineteen sixties ranch and we don't really care about it? Um, that same process follows along with demolition. If you have, um, a newer property, you could demolish it and rebuild it, but historic, you would have to go through an additional set of review. The findings for demolition, um, and most of these standards I pulled from other ordinances, I think I mainly looked at the New Orleans ordinance for, uh, demolition and demolition by neglect. They have a standard, um, where obviously the structures, um, deteriorated to such a degree that restoration's not possible, or it creates an undue financial hardship hardship on the property owner that findings could be made to allow for demolition. Then there's a third finding, and that's highlighted here, that the structure is determined to be a deterrent to an improvement that would be a clear and substantial benefit to the community and cannot be incorporated into the improvement. Priority is given to demolitions that make way for perpetually affordable housing at or below eighty percent AMI. I think that was a later addition that we uniquely added to the standard, um, earlier on in the process. As I look back on it now, you know, thinking about substantial benefit as we grapple with that through the specific plan process. Um, and also that the way the standard is worded is there could be a historic structure that maybe is in a little bit of disrepair, but is el- eligible to be rehabilitated. Um, that might be demolished, and where is the planning commission, you know, feeling on, on that demolition spectrum? Is there something that you would feel would be worthy of taking down a historic building in exchange for something else? And what would that something else be?
You want comments right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Yeah, this is a really tricky one, because I think we've had this happen, right? Like, you know, um, various structures where um. You know, they were in the way of some kind of new thing that was coming along. And, uh, I mean, the most recent is the, is the that greenish building on the corner of Tapp Quarters, um, you know, that for rent forever and for lease, whatever, you know, and.
The Tapp Quarters Farmhouse?
What's that?
The Tapp Quarters Farmhouse?
No.
Uh, Tuck, Tuck, Tuck Road.
That sort of mint green, it was most recently sort of mint green.
And there was also the house, it was in the, oh, that's, this is the village.
So, and this is the village only?
Yep, so this would be the village only.
Right.
Um, there would be the possibility, so a little bit of a segue here, as part of the upcoming town plan process, if the town wants to stay more broadly, consider historic preservation on a townwide basis. I know throughout the hack's work on this, there's a lot of discussion and concern that we're only talking about a tiny part of the town, the village, and even the National Register District is a small subset of that, and a lot of Williston's history is historic structures in Tapp Quarters and the rural part of the town. But that would really need to start in the town plan of having broader goals about, you know, creating a townwide overlay. I think in writing these standards, I've been trying to keep that in mind of if in the future this overlay gets expanded, would these standards work there as well? Um, and I'm, I'm hoping that they would be modular enough in that way, but for now, this would only be contributing structures within the village zone district.
Okay, so I guess, you know, I think my comment still stands where, you know, we've had some historic structures in the village that were, uh, you know, knocked down for for something new or, um, just were, um, kind of impeding whatever it was. Um. And, uh, you know, I think that's a little bit inevitable, and I like the way that the, um, there's some kind of priority given to which demolitions go forward. Um, I'm, I guess, a little curious about um, if you can talk us through kind of like the mechanism of that, like who makes that decision? Who, I mean, I'm guessing it's you guys, um, who, who would assess that, or does the hack have a role?
Good question. Um, so the first step would be the determination of contributing structure status. That's where the zoning administrator makes a finding. Is this structure, this building contributing, i.e. meaning historic or not? If it's not, then it's a standard administrative permit, no additional review to demolish a structure just like any other structure in town. If the structure is found to be contributing, then the process for demolition is via discretionary permit issued by the Development Review Board with advisory comment, um, from the hack. And then there's standards, the DRB needs to make one of these findings that it's deteriorated to such a degree that rehabilitation is not possible or without undue financial hardship. Um, currently, our bylaw is pretty much completely silent on this. It just says if your structure is in bad disrepair, consider selling it. It's like, well, that's not even statutory allowed to stay. But adding in standards for financial hardship where there need to be some documentation and information provided to the Development Review Board that makes the case that, you know, modifying the structure to bring it up to modern standards isn't going to work out financially. And then if the DRB makes a finding that yes, you can demolish the structure, there's additional steps they can take. So they can decide to delay its decision up to six months. And that gives the applicant time to consider options like advertising it as available for relocation, um, incorporating it into re-development plans for the property, seeking further estimates for repair, restoration, um, prepare further information for economic hardship, and advertising that the building elements may be eligible for salvage if the demolition is approved. So for example, that one on Williston, Tuckert Road that you mentioned, you know, after had been demolished, someone in casual talking, gosh, when I saw those like giant old timbers like laying in the rubble, kind of wish I had known because maybe some of that material would have been salvageable. So it, it gives the DRB some time and opportunity to let the property and explore these other options. And then there can be conditions on the demolition, um, like only a partial bit of the structure. Um. Requiring the salvage or reuse either on site, um, or making an effort to incorporate it into the redevelopment or making them available to the public. Just show us evidence that you put everything on Craigslist and gave it away. Um, and then documenting it, you know, if you are going to demolish it, document it, solicit comment about its history. Um, so that even if the structure is taken down, we have a solid record of it.
Okay. My only other recommendation is rephrasing the highlighted text just slightly.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Uh, the second part of the first sentence, it says determined to be a deterrent to improvement, that will be clear and substantial benefit, and that cannot be incorporated into the improvement, and that's a little awkward because it, we're already referring to the re- to the improvement. Maybe to say, um, and the structure cannot be incorporated into the improvement. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm generally okay with all this, and I have an example that doesn't fall in a good place for anything, which was ten years ago. I can't remember if I applied in two thousand twelve, got the permit in two thousand thirteen to take down a structure behind my house. Um. That had no footings, no foundation, no doors.
I remember it, it was amazing.
Its walls were fiberboard from the nineteen fifties. But it was listed in the Historic Register because it had been a, it had been used as a blacksmith shop down by the road next to the Red Brick, the store then, the Lion Building. So because it had a history of having been a hundred years earlier, a open-air blacksmith shop, it was moved back, it's not visible from the road, it wasn't even visible from my driveway or from anywhere, you had to walk on the back of my house to see it. And it was falling into the ground, and it had no salvageable value. And I wound up re- I was storing lawn mowers and stuff, but I wound up building a better garden shed and got the permit to take it down from the hack. Um, I offered it if anybody wanted it, and of course, nobody wanted it. And they suggested if I could reuse something in the new one, it'd be good, and I took a piece of, there was some imprinted tin siding on one part of the upper part, and we framed it and put it inside the new. But, um, but that's a case where it wasn't in the way of something, it wasn't an economic hardship. If basically, if I hadn't been repairing it, it would have already fallen into the ground. And it was much better to take it down than to just let it fall on the ground. And, you know, nobody thought we should try to be keeping it in order to memorialize what it had been, when it was in a different location a hundred years ago.
Mm-hmm.
It, it just didn't have s- s- in structural integrity or.
But they found a way to use the the previous conditions to let you do that.
Yes, on the previous conditions, they.
Right, and that's informed the, and the, the definition of non-contributing structure.
Yeah.
Accessory structures in addition smaller than two hundred and forty square feet, such as sheds, outbuildings, summer kitchens, and lean-tos can also be considered non-contributing structures regardless of age or architectural style.
Great.
So in, in a situation like that, the property owner would ask for that determination letter. The zoning administrator would make those findings on all the structures on the property, and then if it's found non-contributing, you can just get a permit to demolish it. But if it is contributing, it's that more rigorous review.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds good. Does anybody else have Ellie or Jill comment on that previous highlight?
Um, on the other highlight, I'm wondering if it makes sense to take out the example of the affordable housing and just leave it to the, like, the discretion of the hack to just determine what, um, the clear and substantial benefit would be. And kind of the reason I say that is in the specific plan process, it's described as, you know, a substantial benefit as it's saying, like, an example being the view at you know, the exact thing that we're discussing currently with the Glazer Plan, so I'm just not sure if the example is, is helpful, or it should just be more a.
Do you say?
Like, maybe that would be something that the hack would determine, or DRB or whoever, um, would determine is substantial benefit that I just don't necessarily want to scare them if we don't have to box them into allowing it if it's.
Mm-hmm.
That's the example. As written, that clear and substantial benefit, it's
I think on the leading edge of discretion, like.
Yeah.
But what clear and substantial means is not defined in this chapter. Um, I, I hear what you're saying that prioritizing this one thing, maybe there need to be some findings about what could clear and substantial needs to be, or maybe this is a part of the chapter where is the planning education commission okay with it being this totally discretion? We don't know which way the decision will go, and it really depends. And is that okay? Matt, what your thoughts are on?
Well, having sat through a lot of really interesting arguments people have made over the years about why they should be allowed to take something down in the village, people can get pretty creative about what's a benefit, you know, it's ugly, it's an eyesore. My, you know, the, the grand list value will go up if I take this down, um. Maybe someday I'll do something nice there, but for now, I'm just taking it down, um. And I mean, I think what, what this last criterion captures for me though is sometimes somebody wants to take something down. Um, you know, because it's in the way of doing a project that overall is going to improve the property, which may do things that make the property more livable and make the preservation of other elements of the property more viable. So we, we have all of these homes in the village that have been added on to over the years, and, and the compelling testimony when people have come in to demolish parts of those has been, well, you know, here's the historic core of the house, and here's this nineteen thirty addition that is, yes, nearly a hundred years old, but is actually pulling on the eighteen fifty section now, and or creating, you know, the roof lines weren't put together right, and it's, there's rot or something like that. And we'd like to take that nineteen thirty thing off and put something else there instead that's compatible with the historic core of the structure. Emily, I think there's something in here that captures that idea, right?
Yeah, that's.
Partial demolition later on.
Yeah, the DRB makes use one of the following conditions, a partial demolition whereby the oldest, most significant, and/or most repairable building masses routine and the rest demolished. A partial demolition does not mean demolishing three sides and retaining the floor.
I have seen that.
Because that has happened.
I want to, everyone, it's a way for others, but here is my concern with it, which is exactly what we've been through with the, um, you know, with the special plans, and like, what does even I'm worried, like, year over year, if you go in front of a different DRB, they're going to have a different opinion on what clearance potential is if we don't get specific about it. And not that I want to box them, I mean, I just think there are lots of different extenuating circumstances that we cannot predict now, but
Mm-hmm.
Like, I do think that we as a planning commission should have a slightly, not slightly, a much clearer definition of what is a clearance potential benefit.
Mm-hmm.
And either make and have that be consistent throughout our as, I mean, not for everything, but this is a great example where I think it could be fairly consistent with the, um, you know, special plan concept where, you know, what I, I do think affordable housing is a clear substantial benefit, but like, we should probably have that be the same in those other places. And I don't know that we have to, like, fix the whole thing in this moment, but I would like it to line up, and I would like the more clarity there. Um, the view, your view comment is well taken, I think that like the just having that be consistent
Mm-hmm.
throughout as possible.
Yeah, and one thing I'm noticing too, and it's intentional in this section, is that in most demolition applications, you don't have to have a plan for redevelopment at the same time. So you can get your permit for demolition before you even think about what your redevelopment plans are. But this scenario, the highlighted text, is kind of the place where we want to know what your redevelopment plans are, and be, it seems like the clear and substantial is weighing what's there now, what's being proposed. Um, and so this might be a scenario where you do need, if you're asking for this finding, it has to be in conjunction with
With a redevelopment.
Redevelopment plan.
Yeah, I think that might help, and then, Emily, you can tell me, because you've been in this more recently. Um, you know, do we have a, I want to demolish it because it's so far gone that it's dangerous provision in here?
Mm-hmm.
And do we, and do we refer to the dangerous buildings provisions that are in, um, no, I forget which other chapter.
Chapter eighteen.
Because that, that could be another thing, could be to tell an applicant who's, you know, I want to demolish because it's deteriorated.
So. The condition deteriorated that it poses a threat to public safety, and I think.
So you could, where it says as determined by town or state officials, um, for town, we might just go right to, you know, as determined by the zoning administrator, the provisions of.
You're lining it up with that, yeah.
Citation, dangerous buildings.
Yeah.
Um, and I will not tell you that I think the dangerous buildings language is perfect, because it's basically a way to make somebody knock down a half burned down building. So, you know, it says make findings such as presence of exposed structural members or, or charred wreckage or something like that, and, um, but it, it might help just make it clear that it's old and kids might try to go play in it, it's not, that's, that's a situation where we might order somebody to secure a building,
but not necessarily say, yeah, that's, that opens the door for you to take it down.
Mm-hmm.
So, we could, but we could refer to that. And, you know, I think the la- the highlighted bullet with a little bit of maybe some subbullets about what the DRB findings would need to be. Uh, I like the idea of it being tied to, it's part of a redevelopment plan, it's in the way of something that you want to build. Um, is, as tightening that up a little bit.
What if you said, instead of clear and substantial benefit, which I totally understand, that's, that's tricky, um, what if, what if it, you know, that the improvement would meet some other kinds of town goals or, or goals for the property? Um, like, it could even be like sustainability, or like, I want to put on a solar panel thingy, or, you know, tracker.
That would be, um, a lot better than having it wide open, and it's not quite as prescribed as specific plan.
Right, because we need very specific goals.
You need to point to.
What if you said, okay, you have to point to a goal that this aligns with.
Yeah, I think, I think we could do that, and I think that's a, you know, I'm thinking, I'm imagining staffing one of these in front of the DRB and kind of saying, okay, they've said the goal is, um, renewable energy. They are proposing. They are proposing a solar carport in that location.
Or like a lead net zero building.
Yeah, or you know, it's the least efficient part of the building, you know, I I could, I could see doing that in a way where you're having somebody do a little bit of work around it. And it's not just because um I want to take it down so it's a vacant lot that I can market as a vacant lot. So, okay, I think we can come.
So another discussion point. As well for the setback requirements, particularly to route two. So simplified those quite a bit, right now it's fifty feet. The maximum for the primary structure would be fifty feet, so your your first primary building. On the site, that's the one that has an entrance directly. In visible from the street cannot be more than fifty feet. And then the minimum is twenty five feet or the average setback, so if things around you are a lot closer, you can also be. A lot closer. Or you can be kind of a middle ground, who looks like Kate Lamar is joining in on Zoom. And then Matt and I are working on definition of of building mats. Um, I think we're gonna need to have a definition section of the bylaw, part of what I'm working on. That probably show at another meeting is. Defining building mass and defining like primary structure, primary face of a structure, so a lot of what. The conversations have been geared around is that primary entrance having connectivity to the street. Having a little bit more prominence in terms of design review and then a little bit more flexibility in terms of. You know, making modifications to the side or the rear of the building, there's a lot of discussion about being more permissive with materials where. It's a addition on the back of the house that nobody else is ever gonna see.
Can you go back up to the previous highlight part? Cause these are related, am I catching that right?
Well, there's right.
Because you're talking about.
Yeah, they're they're all original standards, yeah.
Is it, so. You all know my foible with uh having garages. Like, does the, just a garage count as the, as the, you know. A primary mass or a primary structure on the parcel?
No, I need to make sure that the language says that, but that's definitely not the intent, that the garages would be. Set back or oriented to the side.
So I would be delighted with that.
The last thing I want to touch base on this evening is about uses. Uh, I think there was a lot of discussion and confusion over the last few meetings and public info sessions. On this topic and I think Matt and I have found a good resolution. Um, so everywhere throughout the village, there's expressly prohibited uses proposed, sale of bulky. Materials and items, automotive or automotive equipment, sales leasing, et cetera, self-storage, mini-storage, transportation, warehousing. We are specifically not listing any types of industrial uses because. The standards that lead ahead are geared towards. The nuisances of use, so you might have somebody that's. A brewer or a baker and they're on this really small scale where technically it is an. Industrial use, but it's so small and minor and that their site is designed in such a way that the you nuisances. Typically associated with that like noise and odor are all contained. Um, right now, commercial uses are allowed throughout the village. Um, and the intent with these standards is to. Allow what I'm calling minor non-residential uses throughout the district and the major non-residential uses. Um, where there's frontage on Williston Road. And based on your discussions, the addition of Old Stage, North Williston and Oak Hill Road, so these. Busier thoroughfares in the village. Minor non-residential uses. You can't have outdoor sales areas, you could have an outdoor seating area, but it's limited as like an employee break room or like an. Outdoor office workstation, you couldn't have outdoor dining for customers. Outdoor storage at two hundred and fifty square feet, very screened. Solid waste containers essentially in line with a residential property. Two ninety-six gallon totes are the the regular residential rolling totes. Um, and then some discussion for you guys about how many onsite parking spaces should be allowed.
This isn't a minor non-residential.
So if you need more than any of these things, you're a a major non-residential use. And you're only allowed in a subset of the village that's got frontage on one of those major roads down below.
How does um eggs? How would that? Would that meet these requirements for their outdoor seating and stuff, probably over on the parking?
They would be over in the parking, so they would automatically have to be a major non-residential use, they would be allowed because they have frontage on Williston Road. And the frontage is based, um, not just on the lot, but that the structure. Is adjacent to or directly visible from the above listed road. So we were discussing about this, like the slate barn, if you wanted to put like a little art gallery in it. It's not fronting directly on Williston Road, but you can see it. Um, whereas you don't want to allow it where frontage is achieved by a live lot where only the driveway portion of the lot has the. Frontage and the structure parking and outdoor areas serving the use are set back from abutting properties. Um, more provisions for outdoor sales and display, you can have um outdoor display in the front yard. Um, you can have a larger outdoor storage area, it's still subject to the same fencing screening requirements. You can have outdoor work areas, um, this is something that we're gonna keep working on defining as to what outdoor work area. Means. And here's where, based on our recent experience of the 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 hot dog home business stuff. Um, it's not well defined in the bylaw and the way I have it worded now is it does give the DRB or some zoning administrator. A lot of discretion. It can have be required to have a larger setback instead of ten feet, twenty feet. And it's based on the nature of the proposed activity and the characteristics of the abutting property, so. If you are a commercial use and say you're gonna have a smoker because you do smoke turkeys, maybe that's fine if where your lot is. That's gonna be nowhere close to any of the abutting properties, but maybe if it's gonna be in a more dense area. It just doesn't make sense and give the DRB and exoning administrator a lot of authority to consider. What are you doing? Um, and what are the characteristics? Maybe having an outdoor yoga class is totally fine. But letting that those two bodies have the most discretion in that decision. Um, and then also unlike minor areas, you can't have outdoor seating for customers, you can have that in these major areas.
So I, that was my question about eggs was about the, I think their outdoor seating might be around seven hundred and fifty square feet. And that it seemed to be a totally appropriate thing, I know the neighbors complained about noise when they had. And tapping there, but. Is that, would that be allowed?
Outdoor seating is a little. Right next to a middle school, I mean like. Fifteen years ago.
Why did they just take the slate off and put the new slate that's taken off and then put back on? It took all the slate off.
On the front and the back?
Yeah, and then they put it back on, yeah.
I wondered about that.
I think they were working on flashing a lot, but I didn't know if that was the reason there, it was strange. Maybe they decided it was gonna be more efficient to pull it all off and run all the flashing. That maybe they decided they needed after it rained all that much in July.
I wonder if they had some issues, yeah, oh.
It was stacked on the side. Along the side, yeah. I was kind of wondering.
I asked one of the workers, but he only spoke Spanish.
Yeah, because I did see them up there, but I didn't know if they were.
And and I wasn't thinking the eggs was gonna be a restaurant again, but I thought if someone wanted a restaurant.
Yeah, that's just an example.
Yeah, it could be.
Um, can we, sorry, can we just, I just want to give you an answer for the four or the six parking spots? If you asked that question. Um, would that include like employee, you think, knowing for employee and whoever's going there?
Yes, that would be. For the whole site.
So the Ayurvedic center is already out of conformity there.
They front on Oak Hill, right?
Well, I think. Is it Williston Road or is it Oak Hill?
But I think you're right that that's a good case study to think of.
Yeah.
Cause their parking lot, I don't know how many it has, if it's like eight or.
Yeah, and they've got the extra and some data is just rammed in there, which I don't have a problem with. But I'm just mentioning that as a sort of thought exercise. For a very low-key use that is not apparent or disruptive in the outside.
Yeah, when we think about the location for these minor ones that would have that four to six.
Maple Road, Village Grove.
Tower Lane.
Tower Lane, Church U of State.
Slay Farm Lambert.
Slay Farm Lambert.
Like, if you're in the village and you're not on Williston Road, Oak Hill Road, Old Stage Road, North Williston Road. You're probably on a pretty residential side street.
Right, right, and of course, that's on two of those. Two of those named roads, which is fine, um, but it may just help people understand.
It's a good case study kind of them, yeah.
And the thing is like we we give right now ultimate flexibility on how much parking someone wants to provide. In the village, we don't have a minimum in the village, the DRB has total freedom, so this is more about, oh, you want to do that business. If we let you do that business as a minor business, one of the criteria it needs to meet is that it's only creating a very few parking spaces. I'm a minor business and you keep saying, and you know, well, can you meet these criteria, and they, yeah, oh, I'm totally a minor business. Okay, you can only have four parking spaces, it'll wait a minute. I'm a minor business, but I need more parking than, no, that makes you a minor business. If you're gonna be in the village, you really need to be on one of the major roads.
And that's in keeping with the residential character of all of the roads that are not listed.
Yeah, I really tried to think of minors when I was looking at like. Oh, slightly souped-up version of home business. Doesn't have that owner occupancy requirement, the thresholds are a little bit higher on some things, but it's just a step above home business. But not to the full-blown commercial. There's much parking is.
You feel like it.
Feel like, yeah, you can fit.
And and keeping in mind, right, that today's village zoning district is simply a mixed-use district. Entirely inside is worth with no distinction whatsoever around this stuff, so uh I think this brings a lot of nuance to it. And I think the criteria are about as. Clear as they can be without being, you know, overly restrictive.
Not sure how a dog rescue. No, but if someone decided to do that. Yeah, we're saying, yeah, I think we so we can have one or two or some number. Of residential kennels.
The accessory language.
Yeah, and I, but. What if you said I'm not residential, I'm I'm not doing a home business, I'm doing it. Minor non-residential use.
Yeah, this is where defining what outdoor work area actually means is gonna be helpful, because it says here, all other outdoor work areas are not permitted. So you can have a little bit of employee seating, you could do your work from your computer outside of the picnic table, but. All other outdoor work areas, I mean, even as this is written. I'm trying to think about like the outdoor like yoga or Tai Chi class, how that would fit in here and I feel like it wouldn't work in the minor category. You pretty much have to be inside your structure.
One, one thing we might want to, because we're being really granular here, be clear about is what's indoor and what's outdoor. So I have a big screen porch, I bought a purple at Costco, now it's indoor. Uh, where really it's quite permeable to the things that, you know, the nuisances that you're trying to keep inside. Um, and kennels are a great example of that where it's a structure, but it's not hard-sided, it's not. Um, even even some of them that I've had to deal with that were um generally a hard-sided, you know, a walled framed structure, there's a noise issue.
Where you put a bunch of kennels in a.
So, I I mean, I'm I'm really starting to feel not great about dog-based businesses in mixed-use districts, to be honest, just. Given, given the challenges they've presented to us, that's that's a bigger bylaw conversation some other time.
Right, yeah, because that's not just village, that's.
No, it's it's all over town and um. Yeah, it's just, it's much more challenging to manage nuisance um for that particular use than I think we realized.
Yeah, and and the standards of chapter eighteen still apply where if someone's proposing. Okay, you are doing a wood workshop. In the shed, I might need some more information about. Noise and what equipment is being used, how loud is it, is it causing any vibration? Um, and that chapter also applies to one as well.
Yeah, we we had an example many years ago, someone who proposed a home machine shop in a residential garage in the village and. My predecessor said, no, and the guy said, well, why not? Well, because you're gonna be machining metal and probably the garage door is gonna be open and it's going to be really loud. There wasn't a lot to point to in the bylaw, other than I sort of predict there might be a nuisance problem here. So the more we can codify all of that, it just makes those conversations a lot easier because people. Look at buying homes or buying properties with all kinds of ideas and expectations about what's gonna be okay. Yeah, I mean, we, and we want to encourage, you know, makers and all this kind of interesting stuff, but it can come with these challenges.
And that's something I would just want to make sure that we aren't. You know, like the the example of outdoor office workstations and a computer is like. Okay, well, that's one vision, but you know, there's a lot of crafts or like. More kind of. Manual. Kinds of work that might happen outdoors and I think you may need to kind of think through those a little bit as well. Um, it could be things that don't necessarily make a lot of noise, but maybe they have some other kind of nuisance and so. Just thinking about like manual work. Uh, you know, not outside of just a computer on the picnic table. Um, I think would be valuable. In this thought exercise.
What about where like if if someone wanted to grow marijuana plants in their. Home in the village, where would that, yeah, it seems like it'd be allowed under that, but it also would be. Potentially nuisance or might make some.
So I'm, I'm hoping. That we don't get an odor-based cannabis cultivation nuisance complaint. Because that's been happening, it's been happening in um Charlotte and and odor in general, just like so hard to deal with. Right now, there are probably some tiers of um outdoor growing. Licenses that people can get that would fit in a small, I mean, first off, it's a homeowner just doing it. Under the provisions that have existed for a while now, allowing home growing, it's kind of like. Anything else somebody's growing in their garden, um, we don't, we don't regulate it. Um, there's actually a couple more tiers of outdoor grown licenses that we can't regulate at all now anyway. And again, uh, Charlotte and Stowe kind of imposed these really big setbacks on all the tiers of outdoor growing and then. The legislature kind of responded by dialing back their authority to do that. So I think at the scale that everything is thought about in the village. It's pretty unlikely to be an issue, but we, Megan, to your point about. Or Emily, I guess, you were saying there's some judgment call stuff about setbacks. Around outdoor work areas that could come into play with that.
Yeah, and that was in the in the major. The major non-residential uses, which is restricted to those specific roads. Subject to a greater sided rear and setback of twenty feet, except when adjacent to an abutting driveway where the setback is reduced to ten feet. The DRB or zoning administrator may limit the size or location of outdoor. The DRB or zoning administrator may limit the size or location of outdoor work areas. Depending on the nature of the proposed activity and the characteristics of a budding properties. So we could emulate something like that for minor.
Everything I'll say as well around the cannabis topic, keep in mind cannabis retail, uh, while not allowed in Williston because there hasn't been an opt in vote. Also is not allowed in the village under Williston zoning right now. And if this was a total replacement of forty two. Either that's gonna change or it would need to be reflected in the list of um prohibited uses here. So, um. Something to think about, um, I don't, you know, that was something, that was where the planning commission and select board landed a couple of years ago. Uh, at the outright provision on cannabis retail in this district. Um, don't know where the select board's at now, that might be part of. Wherever this group lands on that, that might be part of the introductory conversation with the select board, um, whether that's changing or not under this draft. Overall, we're getting very specific about things and it makes me uncomfortable because I feel like. We don't know how things are gonna be in the future and we're trying to create an environment for the future. There used to be four gas stations between Old Stage Road and North Williston Road, now there's one. And if that one stopped being a gas station, it could be a gas station in the future. And yet I think people feel like that's a valuable point of quick stop as it is, is accepted and people feel it's valuable. And so I just, I have a hard time, we we thought about in a. Well, it's, I guess maybe cuz it's unretreatable, it could be the same, but workers in Wood used to have a significant woodworking shop right here in the village. And there are these restaurants that have come and gone. And I feel like, I I don't. I feel like less regulation is good, but what we're trying to do is prevent the problems that come. From noise, odor and other kind and traffic, so what we're trying to prevent. The problems without limiting the creativity of people. And so it gets. I, it's hard for me every time we say something specific. It feels like we are limiting creativity and making it. Very administrative, very, what is it, what's the word, um? You know what I'm saying? Regulated. And that's just a general comment. That, um, let's only put in what we have to put in. To avoid. Noise, odor and other. Things that we, that nuisance, what we would consult call nuisances.
Yeah, I don't know that I would wanna be specific in this. By law about cannabis. My opinion. Think we would want that to be a more, yeah.
Well, so the, the reason it exists the way it does is because whether uses are allowed or not. Exists in each individual chapter of the bylaw for each zoning district. So the existing structure of where you say something is allowed or not allowed. Follows the um zoning district chapters. So we don't have a chapter that says cannabis is allowed here and it's prohibited there, we have. A zoning map and then we have a chapter for each one, so we're working in that framework when we address the issue. And essentially, starting from a place where um. In the North American industrial classification system, which is the, the way we define uses in most of our bylaw. It it falls under um like other miscellaneous retail. And so the default was it's allowed everywhere retail sales are allowed, and I don't wanna drag this conversation all the way into that. But that's what we were starting with, we had an informational conversation, select board said, so. If you do nothing and there's an opt in vote, cannabis retail is allowed in the village and the tap corner zoning district and the gateway district north and the gateway district south. And the mixed use commercial and the mixed use residential district, and then they, they in this group kind of picked. Let's allow it in these couple districts with with some added DRB procedures and not these others, so. When we did form based code, we did it as an overlay and parcel that we just didn't have to discuss or touch. All of that very recent work to DRB, or sorry, the select board.
So when they replace this, we are eliminating that provision that we did.
You you either carry it forward or you don't, and then you're creating an allowance that's not there right now, so it's just a thing to be aware of. Because it it'll come up at some point. And so decide and, or you know, then see how it goes. Are tobacco and alcohol sales allowed in the village? I have a hard time categorizing cannabis.
Right, so right now, food and beverage stores. Are allowed. Health and personal care stores are allowed, but those NEICS numerical digits are different than. The number that cannabis is allowed under. So now that we're going to a broader thing where. These express list is prohibited, everything else is a go. If you meet these under standards.
We're getting rid of that list.
We're getting rid of this list, but you could add cannabis to the prohibited list.
It was short prohibited list, right? And so, you know, it's, it's just a question of how much policy do you wanna change with this amendment? And how much policy is the select board willing to change with this amendment, um? Which is like why we didn't wanna change it when we did FVC cuz we were changing literally everything. So, yeah, it's a good, good one to just put as a question, um, resolve it before it transmits to the select board. So off the main streets with a home. This, or with a minor business, four or six spaces. Not for the, if it's a homeowner, it's an owner occupied spot, the home could have two spaces and then four for the business.
The way this is worded, I think it would be on the entire property, but we could clarify.
I would say for the non-residential use. My um daughter. Thirty five years ago took piano lessons from someone in Lamp Light Acres. Which would be like this off the main road. And the woman had like six or eight electric pianos lined up in here and. You see where I'm going, and that to me is probably a fine use in off the street, off the main roads. But. Light, uh, well. So they park on the street too, there's no problem.
Thing with those, I I'm sorry, um, with those. More residential streets is that there's on-street parking, there's not on North Williston or Oak Hill or, you know, or two at the moment, sorry.
That's what I was gonna say, it seems like this restriction may be less useful, especially when they need more of the town, um, like more of the neighborhood areas. Um, but I was also looking at. Um, the, the second bullet point and. Um, the, it says outdoor seating areas no larger than five hundred square feet gives a couple examples, it goes. Outdoor dining areas for customers, they're not permitted, all other outdoor work areas are not permitted. And it's unclear which area, like what outdoor. Like it's only for outdoor seating is what it's saying. And so the distinction between seating and working is very unclear, like say someone is holding a painting class. Right, and everyone is sitting, but they're also working, like, is that a, is that a valid? Isn't it, so maybe it goes along with the point that was already there about, you know, have more, more creativity here, what do we?
Painting class, morning class. Well, I mean, you already limited outdoor seating as being accessory to. An office or. Food use or whatever, you know, you come up with a list, so. I think, I think where we run into trouble with outdoor work is when it generates nuisance. So.
Noise, odor. Dust.
Vibration.
Vibration.
Bright light.
Fumes.
Welding sparks. Yeah, and that's, I think we can, we can kind of clean that up.
I would go, I would lean to six, that's something. I would personally.
I would too, I think. If it's a residential house, I think, like, I'm thinking of my house growing up, and my dad had a small and base business and like. By the time me and my brother could drive, it's, you know. Four cars for the family and dad's work car, and that was five cars and, you know, it didn't. Seem like it was overwhelming to me.
And even though six would be permitted, it still might not work on every site because you have. Setback restrictions.
Right.
Another standard, so that's the maximum allowed, but I'm thinking a lot of these lots. You'd be lucky to even get four, just based on how small they are.
This, this is really just another way of trying to limit the intensity of use. It's not so much about limiting the size of the parking lot, it's like if, if your minor non-residential use meets all those other bullets, but you need a dozen parking spaces for some reason. Then it's not so much, that's why, that's why this is there. Um, cuz sometimes that's how intensity of use. No, Chaven has to bring the chickens there.
Yes, right. So, um, it is eight o'clock, um, this is the feedback I was definitely looking for, I think this conversation is really helpful. Um, and this direction that Matt and I are going on things in terms of timeline. On the fifteenth and the fifth, there'll probably be some more iterative discussions on other topics. Um, and then it'll be ready to warn a hearing.
I wanna say again that really good work happened exactly a year ago, thanks to you, Emily. I want to make sure we reengage the community that was engaged in.
Definitely, so my plan is when this draft is ready for public consumption. Um, and you guys wore to hearing, everybody that reached out in that process, I'll let them know. Probably have some informational meetings, um, and do some sort of digest. I'll probably do some direct one-on-one communication, there are a lot of people who are very. Helpful in this process, um, and let them know where their changes were. You know, made into the draft.
And we should put things on front porch forum and on, um, the observer.
I'll just have it on the agenda up in front of me, so you have the next item.
Oh, good, Matt, it's next.
All right, uh, twenty fifteen. And Emily, I'm gonna. I did this the wrong way, I'm gonna add you in the general. Thread of teams with my notes from village stuff, there's a document there.
Oh, okay.
Throw it in the chat.
Cool.
And then, can you go to mentee dot com and screen share? And then I'll post the, so we're using everybody's favorite tool, Mentimeter. So if you have your phones or your laptops, you wanna rip them out and and we're, I'll, I'll also just listen for shouted answers and type them in. Um, the, the goal here, oh, you want the number, Emily? Three eight seven seven. Seven six six zero, and that's gonna show up on the screen in a second for everybody as well.
I have a question, do public people participate?
Feel free to jump in, jump in, this will be fun. So you can do it on your phone, this is a tool we use. Oh, my graphics not showing up, um. Well, we go to mentimeter dot com, you have to download the app. You just go to, you go, um, mentee dot com, okay, thank you. And then.
What's your screen look like?
I've got the nice font and the tap corners. Andrew did this very nicely, I just want everybody to know that if you don't get to see the nice graphic.
Sorry, can I get the code again? I missed it.
Yeah. I think we all need it. I think, actually, you might need to screen share.
Do I?
Yeah, in order for it to. To, cuz I'm seeing a participant view.
And that's not working, okay, hang on a second. I'll pop into the uh Zoom meeting and the code is. It'll, it'll, I'll show it to you in a second, Chaven, cuz I, I don't have it in front of me now. Taking just a sec. It may not let me screen share either because, um.
Oh, yeah, you're.
I'm browser only. On my Zoom. I'll jump in anyway.
Do you want me, I can log into Mentimeter?
Yeah, why don't you do that? Sorry, folks. So, um. While we're doing this, I'll just say, you know, we've, we've been kind of um. Chugging along with our uh consultant and. And we wanna talk a little bit about as we get ready to dive into some survey work, um. Some of the, some of the points.
Close that, close that Mentimeter.
We want to, um, okay, I'm out. See, we should go ahead. Thank you, there's the number.
All right.
So. We wanted to brainstorm with the planning commissioner on some of the um. More key areas of the town plan. What kind of feedback, as the planning commission is writing this plan? Where, where do you want us to focus in terms of getting citizen input? In other words, there, there may be some things for each of these individuals or pre used group where you say. Well, when we go to write the town plan about this issue, I know what we wanna say, I, you know, it, it draws on a bunch of facts or a bunch of experience. And there might be other places where you go, you know, I really don't know so much about like what my town thinks about this issue. And I really wanna know what they think about this before I set out to write the language in the plan and establish the goals, priorities and sort of the to-do list. For the town, um, from twenty twenty five through twenty thirty two, so that's what this is about, we're gonna work through it pretty quickly, um. I've got, I've got nine topic areas and and in each, we're gonna ask the same three questions and just. Pop it into a Word cloud and we'll make the results of this available in your minutes next time around. So the questions we're gonna ask about each issue are, what is the most controversial thing about this issue in Williston? What kind of questions would you wanna ask people about this issue in Williston? And who do you wanna ask? So if it's a que, if you, after you think of your questions, is there a target audience for these questions? And we can, we can jump right into the first one, I'm gonna try to do these about two minutes. Each. We have to announce that we are implementing this and then let, then we'll get the feedback. So, so the first one is what's controversial about transportation in Williston? If anybody has trouble inputting, just. Let me know. And it's perfectly okay to repeat what it says on the example, we just, we just wrote those as prompts of things we could think of.
Should we do them like separate, a separate thing?
Put one in and then put another one, it, it'll, it'll let you put them in until, um, Emily advances the slide, then you'll get a little warning that says the slide has moved on. And that's, that's like we're, we're closing up. And we're, we're, we're about halfway through the input period right a minute, so. Great. We thought doing what's controversial would help get everybody's brain kind of. Kind of going on the topic. Got another half a minute and then we're gonna move on. About fifteen seconds, last call, hit, hit the submit button if you haven't. Um, and, um, if we're good, Emily, why don't you go ahead and advance the next question? So what questions do you wanna ask about transportation? We're gonna go out and ask people in Williston about transportation, what are the questions you want us to ask? I'll give you two minutes. Now. Do you want the circuit waiver against? I said, which ones do you want to ask?
We did put F thirty fives in there because we can't change that.
She's great. Let's go. Funny time. About thirty seconds. Right, about, about fifteen to go. I can go ahead and hit submit on your last questions now. All right, we can move on to the next one. All right, so, great questions. Who should we ask? Two minutes.
Last one didn't show up.
Oh, yeah, it takes a second.
Scroll.
Just scroll.
Have to be like on the bright spot of the screen or just scroll.
I, I put people who don't wear a card. That's the people that should tell us what to do about that.
Uh, about, about thirty seconds. Yeah, about, uh. Ten, go, I go ahead and submit your last things if you want to submit them. All right, move on. Congratulations. Just to transportation in six minutes.
They just like this because.
All right.
Efficient.
Now, how?
Oh, nothing. All returned here. We don't even have to take detail.
Yeah.
It's just kind of pat area is right.
Y'all just looking cool.
Oops. I didn't say next question. Emily, do you have to scroll it down to reveal the newer ones?
Yeah, I don't know why it's not self-scrolling.
I thought it was supposed to. About a minute to go. Go ahead and hit the last one's in.
He started.
Good job, team.
We're giving you an extra second.
I'm interested.
All right. Moving on. So what questions do you want to ask about housing in Williston?
Why don't you know?
Or the previous answers.
It's okay to repeat the example.
Yeah, right.
You know, that was just me and Andrew kind of trying to think of survey questions. Ten seconds. Go ahead and submit your last. See, Chaven.
Second.
Shay was still typing. Don't want to lose any of these great responses. Again, are we good? All right, next. Just like I said, who are we gonna ask? A minute to go. Hmm. Twenty. Twenty seconds. All good? All right. I was thinking six minutes. What is controversial about land use in Williston? Um, keeping in mind, you have the town plan has a big land use map. We set boundaries between things. We allow things in some places. We don't allow them in others. That's what land use kind of means here. Minute to go.
Putting housing in the water is so, it sounds like putting housing in the water and putting it in the sewer.
A half a minute to go. Yet last call. Okay, are we good? All right, next up. So you're going to survey people about land use when you want to ask. Yeah. And this is about questions. Sorry, one of our examples is, is the, the incorrect who example because Andrew and I were skipping back and forth. Putting examples in. So this is, this is what questions do you want to ask? We'll get to the who in a second. And we can.
Did you want to go?
My mom just died.
Oh.
But I was, I got into this and all the rest.
Do you want to? What kind of food do you have?
Here, you can use mine for something.
That's gonna do it. All right. Sorry, can you re give me?
Yeah.
The code. Oh, um, three, eight, seven, seven.
It's on top.
Seven, six, six, zero. Give you a little extra time here. Well, I have like at least two dead iPhones in my drawer at my desk I could charge up. They don't last very long, but they probably work on the wifi.
The wifi password.
Uh, wireless, capital W with dollar signs for the two S's at the end.
Everybody is before.
I see some folks still typing. All good? You know what's coming. Who do you want to ask in two minutes?
Not through power cord.
No, it's just a, I press something weird.
I don't see that first one.
Uh, this is our talk. Said everyone. I saw that. I was there. Yeah. Just we, we've had to scroll past it. That's interesting. For about another thirty seconds or so. Are you on the right? Oh, you gotta move to the next question.
I know the wrong question. Sorry.
I'm sorry. That's my one feedback to Mentimeter to make that.
Automatic. What's the, what's, why can't I think of the business of the sandwich champagne?
Wait, champagne.
CCRP. Oh, the option.
Oh, so if you're on an old phone, you can still input.
Hmm, you can type into the box, but you can't submit it. You can say submit. And then it goes, eh, the submit, the presenter. You're sitting there typing away.
Like it should just can't.
It should just.
Yeah.
Say, sorry, no, we're moving on.
Yes, and that's a Mentimeter because they, they're pretty responsive to stuff.
Yeah. Everybody all set? All right, the next one.
Energy.
Energy. Anybody remember writing the energy plan or is that like?
Been a while.
Oh, man.
It's painful.
I are.
And second? Okay. You can submit. Yeah, shouldn't be showing up. I want. Um, but I was, I was reacting to someone else's. Oh. Because the energy committee's been putting something in the Williston Observer every month for fifteen, last sixteen months. I thought that was a lot of outreach.
And they're going to.
It's my regard, yeah. But I, I, I'm wrong to criticize anybody else's.
I'm just casually over here humming Barbie Girl. I have been since Saturday.
That's the last, last call on this one. All right. Next one. Who should we ask? About energy? We're on who should we ask? Yes. If it's, if it's obvious that a response was meant for one, we can drag it over in the.
Yeah.
Oh, so they actually still going in, but they went into the wrong. Well, if we figure it out, like it's a who answered that ended up in the what column, we can.
We can move it around.
Yeah.
Climate, oh, the climate action. Is this legislature has it?
Climate Caucus?
No, not the caucus, but they have a climate action. Or there's people that aren't part of the legislature.
Oh, the. The appointed people?
Yeah.
Yeah, I forget their name.
Know what you mean. It's a state climate committee.
Let me show up on this one. All right. All right. This, this is a question about hazard mitigation and resilience. So hazard mitigation is an element that has to be addressed in the plan. And if you want to think about it more broadly, it's like climate resilience. That would be the way to sort of think about it. So.
Hazard.
Climate resilience. So generally hazard mitigation is like things like fires, floods, pandemics, et cetera, are going to happen. What's your plan for them? So that's the element of the plan that you're writing here. So. It's a little bit of, we, we, we ramped up the intensity here. It's a proper one to think about. People get mad when culprits blow out and roads are closed during the.
Right, but it's like what makes, sorry. What's controversial about what we're doing about hazard mitigation or like what we're not doing about hazard?
Yes. I think both, I think both, yeah. You know, when it's controversial sometimes to spend money on stuff. Where you're preparing for something and you're not sure what, what it's going to be. What do you call the animal paths through the, the migration paths? Oh, corridors. Well, like travel borders.
Well, like borders, yeah.
Where they're, they're auto fix. Maybe it's my own. From fifteen seconds on this one, sort of the last call. Someone came in once in my office. We were doing the village stuff and she said, it does nothing to do with the village, but I'm really mad at you that that Talbot Road culprit went out. It should happen to do in twenty sixteen. Talbot Road was closed on one side. And she says, I want to talk to you about that. How come you guys didn't know that culprit was going to go in that rainstorm? Said, we don't always know.
That's why we're too intense.
It's why it's a who. Are we good on this one? All right. So. If you're going to go ask the public about hazard mitigation, what would we ask them? I think, I think when we got the example fire department, that was meant for the who column. About another, another minute on this one? And good chances. Yeah. Fifteen seconds, last call on this.
I have a six year old and he's been very concerned about the smoke and the floods and. We're sitting outside having dinner tonight and I'm like, wow, it's so cute coming down now. And he was like, well, what if a tornado came?
Quiet, this is for your camera.
Are we good on this one?
Got the right mindset, I guess.
Who do you want to ask? Um, by the way, this is really, really great, like a wealth of feedback we're getting from this already. I'm just watching this come by. This is really awesome. This is super helpful. So thank you for. Doing all this silent writing.
Just gel the magic keyboard.
I figured it would be worth opening up rather than dealing with the tiny screen.
Okay, we'll go another fifteen seconds to start on this one. Cool. Are we good? All right. Economic development. Town plans have to have an economic development. Uh, component. So what's controversial about economic development in Williston? Okay. Serving our last call for this one. Get your last responses in. There's something in the chat. Is that all?
That's all, yeah.
Okay, great. All right. What do you want to ask people? About economic development in Williston?
That's not, well, we all fixed the word. Bothering is not very important.
Sort of a last call on this one. It was. What did you work on? Everybody in? Okay. And who do you want to talk to about it? Running in, last call on this one. Everybody on set?
Yeah.
All right. Great. How many topics do we have?
I was gonna say, I want to give you a time chat.
Nine oh five, in time to the salad. All those bonus 15 seconds are adding up a little bit, but we're getting close.
Right.
Chickens, chickens.
Is this the last set?
Um.
It's either this or the next one. Education's the last one.
Is it?
Oh, I think so.
I don't know.
We gotta be getting close, because we counted. 27 slides by two minutes, so we should be hitting nine o'clock really close. I can speed up a little time, too. Set a timer, actually.
There's utilities and facilities too.
Well, we hit a, we hit a stop, we hit a stop. This has been great. I don't want to push it. Did you say there's education and utilities and facilities?
Yeah, there might be something else. I'm trying to like look at the slides. On my phone, but it doesn't tell me their whole. Okay. Table.
Last call on this one.
Yes, this one, then utilities, facilities.
That's it?
I think so.
Okay. Do nine oh five.
It's not a fact. They're like halfway through.
Oh, no.
My brain hurts.
I didn't tell you guys this was gonna be.
Yeah, you could say three. You said three questions.
I didn't know it was three per. Three.
Six slides. Oh, it's a four parter.
Unlimited questions.
Some last calls on this one, finish up what you, what you got. Take over the state highway, which normally costs us $25,000 a year, so. We'll talk about that next time.
$25,000 a year? That's a bargain.
Last one, town highway reverse rate is. Not favorable. Now, state. Everybody else say?
Yeah.
All right. And you know what's coming. Didn't know you could emoji in your. Mentimeter. Are you more gonna ask the chickens? I don't, is this the what, not the who? I, I asked them that they've walked. Nothing to crow about.
Really, really, nibble my hand.
Oh. But half a minute more on this, just scratch this.
You guys are ruffling every other.
Yeah, and instead of calling, I don't know if you can hear the room.
Yeah, it sounds a little delirious after all these mentors.
About 15 seconds, let's finish this well. Oh, are we on who? Oh, we're on who. We're about to be off to it. We'll sort them out. Yes. Everybody, uh. Close on this one, James, the tiger. All right.
Do we want to do the last two?
Or do you, or do you want to, you got 12 minutes worth. Or do you want to stop?
Oh, it's just one, and then it's education, et cetera.
Yeah, we got three, three about utilities, facilities, three about education.
What do you mean by utilities and facilities?
Um, like community facilities.
Would it help you, would it help you in terms of your timeline? What's your timeline to put this stuff together?
This is, this is not urgent. This is just us starting to figure out our survey strategy. So what's left is utilities and facilities and education. We can do it next time.
Kayla, all I know is I ended my meeting like 30 minutes early last time, so no pressure.
It was all because of Jill's masterful chairing.
Just, just chickens.
We'll, we'll come back.
Okay, let's come back.
When we've got 15 minutes and another meeting, we'll do those last two, because this has been really terrific and thanks everybody for playing along.
My brain will be better, too. Maybe the beginning.
I think it auto saints, yes.
Yeah.
All right.
That's it.
That.
That's all we got. Thank you.
Push into a jerk.
Yeah. Second.
Kate, is this your last meeting with us?
Uh, no, I'll be in the next one, last one.
Oh, great, okay. All right.
Yeah. Sorry, I was late. You know, I've, I've been packing on the brain and I was like packing, gonna be packing, and I was like, oh my god.
Understandable.
So Ellie, I have a question.
Yeah, sorry.
The next hearing, August 15th, is the Trader Lane public hearing. Um, sometimes we will continue to do hearings on Tuesday nights. It really depends on like how big we're anticipating the item to be in terms of do we need additional public seating space? So there might be a hearing, or there might be a meeting where it's not a public hearing, but we're anticipating a lot of public and we move it to a Thursday to use the other room. It'll really be. Kind of at staff looking at crystal ball.
Good luck.
Great, thanks, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thanks for coming.